Good afternoon. Today is, what, January 30th? We're gonna call the scheduled 4:45 workshop to order. We're gonna let, we're gonna start out with prayer and pledge by Bunny Sue Agner.
Please pray. Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for a beautiful day. Lord, we just ask that you continue to be with our district, with our county, with our nation. Lord, we just ask that you give us the wisdom of knowledge to make the decisions that would be pleasing unto you and the right choices for all involved. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have to go through all of that right there. Okay. We're gonna start out with the workshop and let the record show that we have all board members present, except Brother Danny Lundey, my superintendent present, and our attorney Angela Baugh. Superintendent Bashir?
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. So at this time, I'd like to ask our representatives from FISBIT to come up. Mr. Dave Stevens, he's gonna provide the board with an overview of where we are with that outfall of Hurricane Adalia and what it's looking like financially for us.
Good afternoon, board. It's a pleasure to be here. Don't always have good news, okay? Especially in the situation that you're in right now. Right now, you stand, you have about a, you're north of $5 million for your deductibles that you're gonna have to pay. Now FEMA, it says they're gonna help you with that, but you need to understand FEMA, it takes about 10 years to close out a FEMA claim. So when they give you the money, I can't tell you that. Some of it may come in piecemeal. You may get a million dollars here or a half million dollars there. I can't tell you their structure, how fast they're gonna do that. Now, you do have a very good consultant who's working with the district, okay, to try to expedite this as much as possible. But the reality is dealing with FEMA is a challenge. Past that, I would generally say from the experience that the trust has had, you know, with hurricanes and large events, your deductible is one thing, but you're probably gonna have some, I'll call them ancillary costs that are gonna come into it that your insurance isn't gonna cover and that FEMA isn't gonna cover. And for a claim this size, you could be, I think generally, in the range from a half a million dollars to a million dollars, pretty easy of ancillary costs that you will find at some point that you want to try to fix or improve, you know, as you go through this. How much it's gonna hit the insurance is still debatable, and it's debatable for this reason. Now, you have your costs that have come in so far, but the big issue is, is now you are in negotiation over your roofs. Okay? And you have a couple of engineers, you will have engineer representative, and then you're gonna have the insurance engineer representative. And they're gonna go through and look at your roofs, okay, together and try to come to agreement about what roofs need to be fixed, totally replaced, or repaired, those kind of things. So you still have that that's gonna go on. Now, your deductible is pretty much calculated at this point. So really, this is just a discussion in between how much repair and replacement that you're going to get, okay? And that's gonna be, again, from your representative, your engineer, okay, and the insurance engineer. So that will determine really, you know, how much this claim hits the insurance markets, which always affects you because the worse the claim is, the bigger bill is the next year. Now, what FISBIT, and I have talked to Chris Olson about this, we came in, if you remember, a few years ago, and we drone videoed all your roofs so that we knew exactly what they looked like. Now, Scott has been back and he has already done some roofs and he's gonna finish up, okay? That, so you have the before and after so that you can have a really good detailed look at these roofs. And you don't have to get up on them to do that, okay? So that the engineers also have that information. We try to do the thermal, okay, but thermal doesn't work as well on metal roofs, okay? The thermal tells you if you're getting water intrusion or not. Generally, you'll see them in flat roofs or single roofs, those kind of things. You can tell a lot, okay, with thermal on those kind of roofs, but on metal roofs, you can't tell it quite as well. So that's the, in a nutshell, that's generally where you're at. So you have a lot of financial obligation as far as a deductible goes. And I don't know how hard you're gonna get pressed to actually someone is, is actually kinda loaning you that money with no interest at this point, okay? And that's what your recovery management company is doing for you, okay? They're holding off and asking you to pay that deductible because they are kicking that money out, okay, to all the contractors that have came in and fixed everything for you. So they have taken their resources, okay, and paid these contractors, okay? But there is an obligation, you know, that you pay this. And I haven't got a timeframe from them as far as that goes. I do not have a schedule. And I think, you know, your CFO is probably aware of that as far as that goes. And then you also have to see what the time schedule that FEMA is going to start reimbursing you, you know, for those costs as far as that goes.
Can I ask a question about when you're talking about roofs? Now, I understand they're, like I say, they're looking at the roofs and all, but the intent is to still try to get that them repaired this summer, so it's really a tight window.
Yes, yes. So you're in negotiations right now. The goal, the goal, I can tell you right now from McLaren's, which is the adjuster for the insurance companies, okay? What they want to do is they want to get all these roofs reficked, or all these roofs fixed this summer, okay? Get them done, because if you don't get them fixed, then you can have secondary costs, okay? If you have another big storm come through during the summer and the roof isn't as good as it could be, okay, what's gonna happen is, is they're gonna have more exposure, so they wanna get these roofs fixed, okay? You wanna get them fixed, get them fixed properly for the summer. They would like to close this claim out, okay, by September, okay? Now, you're talking about the insurance companies. You're not talking about FEMA, okay? You're not talking about FEMA. You're talking about the insurance side would like to try to close this claim out in September. We'll see if they're successful in doing that. To me, that's a bit of a push, okay, but the big deal is your roofs, okay? What's gonna happen with your roofs? And that's where, again, your engineer and the insurance engineer are gonna get together and look at that. And then also, they will have the information from FISBIT, you know, from the drone videos so that you can take a look at it. Generally...
I think today we have 35 roofs that have damage. Like this is...
Yes.
This complex has a couple different roofs that are damaged.
Yes, and that's where the insurance company, you know, and your engineer have to go through and look at. Is it gonna be a repair or is it gonna be replacement? Okay, now, everyone wants a replacement, okay? Everyone wants a replacement, okay? But, you know, you're gonna have to negotiate some of this, okay, with the insurance carrier, and we're, they're with you, okay? You're not standing alone. FISBIT is in this process. We, we, we talk with them a lot as far as that goes, but we also want our own information. That's the reason we're sending our drone pilot down to get new video, before and after video, so that we can also look at it too and we can give that input into the engineers so that they can actually see it. And it's high-definition video, high-quality, high-definition. You can see if a screw is loose, okay?
And really, having Parker Engineering representing us, us and EA with the emergency advantage, because they're vying for us. They're really trying to get... So in the, Paul Well came in and did inspection and had some like... Just every one. Up and walk it, look it. Bides head blown up.
And that's what they're gonna go through, though. They're gonna go through all that detail. And it is a lot of detail, but you also have a person, I think they have agreed on a contractor that is a professional roofer who has done major roofing also. So you have three entities really that are coming together to try to formulate this and get it done, because you want it done this, this summer, okay? You wanna get these roofs done this summer. You don't want to have damaged roofs for an extended period of time, because you'll just have more secondary damage.
So what was our total, what was our total damages? Where were we at now?
I can't, you know, I'd love to be able to tell you, but I can't until the roofs come in, because the roofs are a big number, okay? You're, you're, you're north, I think, around 12 million at this point. Yeah, but that's, well, I'm just, and you have to realize, when I speak, I talk about what's going to the markets. Now, your deductible is your deductible. What I have to focus on is what goes to the markets. You know, how much are the markets gonna pay? Because that, when we go for renewal, okay, that's the number that they look at. They don't look at your deductible, okay? They don't, okay? They look at how much money they have to pay. So when I talk about, you know, what the cost is, okay, to the, to the trust, okay? It's actually what the reinsurance companies have to pay, what they will pay.
Out of this 12 and 15 million, our deductible is the five?
Five and a half.
Five and a half. That's what we've gotta come up with out of the general fund, right now.
That, that's what, that's what you're obligated for right now.
And we don't even...
That's your obligation. It could go up.
So that means we've got to go seek a loan, or you're gonna allow this, this trust to continue to, how, you don't know?
Well, really what it is, it's EA or recovery management that's actually floating this to you, okay?
Is there a interest on top of that?
They haven't, they haven't said any interest at this point as far as that goes. But again, you know, you have to, you're gonna have to work it out at some point. Now, they're really hoping that the FEMA consultant can bring money in fast, okay, and help mitigate some of that cost for you. But again, if you try to calculate when FEMA's gonna give you money, you know, you should be betting on the horse races then, okay? And all the other sports things that go on, because that is very difficult to calculate when FEMA is actually gonna give you that money. And again, if it's, if it's less than a million dollars, and we just had this discussion at our, at our FISBIT meeting, we brought the FEMA people in, okay, the FEMA consultants in and talked with them, and they said, there's a threshold, okay? If it's less than a million dollars, they turn that around pretty quick. But when you get north of a million dollars, okay, a lot more people look at that. It has to go through a lot more auditing before they will actually release the money to you. So when you're at five and a half, you're north of $5 million, okay, they're gonna take a really good look at this as far as that goes.
Because they're trying to reduce it if, if, if there's any way possible.
Well, FEMA and insurance companies both look to reduce the cost, you know, as far as that goes. And I just met with the markets in Charlotte, quite a few of the markets who are on your program, and they wanted to talk about this claim and, you know, the handling of it and everything else. And we made it very clear to them, okay, we don't want anything more than we're entitled to, but we want everything that we are entitled to, okay? So that they understand, and as long as they feel the claim is being managed well, okay? They don't have as much of an issue, okay, paying the money. And I think this claim has been managed very well from McLaren's, and I think the market will be happy with how it's been handled. And they also liked the statement from McLaren's that they felt that they could close this claim by September. Now, again, that doesn't release your obligation to five and a half million, okay? They're just saying to the markets, we're gonna give you a final number of what you're gonna have to pay, hopefully by September. If they get through the roofing projects, which again are the, are some big numbers, those numbers can change millions and millions, okay? You could be looking at $5 million, you could be looking at $20 million. It just depends what the engineers say and how much they're gonna obligate themselves to fix.
And when will we know that if they're wanting to get it done by the summer?
Well, they'll know that pretty quick. The commit, they're already working on that right now, so hopefully within 60 days, you should know.
They send spreadsheets saying about this year. Well, that's what David's saying. We're, we're battle of the engineers as to, you know, this engineer said one thing, this engineer said a different thing, and now they've got another, a third-party construction roofing expert coming in. So they're gonna get, you know, a combination of these opinions, because there's been a different, not necessarily all roofs, from what I understand from EA, on some roofs, and so some are just saying, oh, it's a repair, and some are saying, no, 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 no. There's more damage than what we see based on our evaluation, and so they're calling for a full replacement. Now, they're trying to get a consensus between the three. And so they're working on that now, and so I'm being told it's in the works, but I don't have a date as to when we will get that final.
So all the inspections have been done except for this final flyover?
Yes, we're, we're finishing that up too. Just, it's just more information for them, okay? And also, we want the district be able to look at the roofs themselves and go, okay, here's high-quality video of every roof that's in question as far as it goes. And you also have to remember, there are engineering standards, okay? And one engineer can't say this and one engineer can't say that, okay? There are engineering standards that have to be met. I think they have to agree to the point of, yes, this, this is damaged, okay? And we have to mitigate that damage as far as that goes.
So right now, this is just in regards to roofs? Or is this in regards to all our, our property?
Well, everything's...
It is on the roofs?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, the rest of it's pretty much been taken care of. Right now, you're in negotiation about the roof repairs.
But the other repairs have finalized or they're, I mean, 'cause he's saying there's gonna be other things that may crop up with these repairs.
They have fencing that hasn't been... Stadium, damage, we're still deciding how they're gonna actually fix that. Or are they gonna do something?
Do we have like a list in regards to our inventory and, okay? But is there something, 'cause I noticed we don't have anything attached on board docs? And so, I mean, yeah, the board hasn't been giving anything yet other than this information, so that's what I'm saying. Do we have a list yet? Because if it's gonna be like dates, say, well, once we start and then other expenses can come, may arise, can we have some type of foreknowledge of what we even looking at as damage other than what we're seeing without FISBIT's eyes?
Everything is damaged, everything, I will, everything. We do have that, and we can provide that for you. It is fluid. Now, there may be some changes.
Right, I get that, but I was just wanting to be able to put my eyes on something.
I guess my question...
Well, that's too late, Chris. We need it now. Yes, Shannon, we're gonna ask questions. You better get ready.
Just, just so you know, that's a massive document. Just so you know, it is a, that is a massive document.
Right, I get it, but I mean, I think it's, it will help us because, like you say, I mean, we've all kinda went through this personally with our own homes and what we're doing, but it's different when you're looking at it, like you say, 'cause you just said, this building is just not one roof, it's multiple roofs. So I think it will help us to get a better idea of how this can change. Right.
Yeah. And FEMA goes for that line by line too. They're, they're very detailed, that's good, line through line. And when I talk about ancillary costs, maybe a better explanation, because I live in Perry, okay? I have to negotiate with my insurance company about repairs. There are certain things that the insurance company isn't going to fix, but I am going to have to fix it, you know, out of my own pocket as far as that goes. So you're gonna run into the same thing. This is a big claim, okay? So you can anticipate that the insurance company is gonna cover some things, that you're gonna wanna fix a new standard maybe, or you maybe wanna fix it, you know, a different way than it was. The insurance company will go, no, we're just gonna fix it back the way it was. You may not want it that way. Traditionally, for a claim this size, you could easily spend $500,000 to $1 million of your own money that you would say, this needs, when we fix this, we need to fix it back this way. It's just part of it.
And that's addition to...
That's in addition to your five and a half million.
Let's back that one up.
Yeah, that, that's just anticipation. I can tell you, I don't have a document that I can show you that, but just in general, what happens is, is those are the kind of things that occur in these.
I'm looking at the timeline of September claims will be closed out, okay? Does that mean everything's gonna be repaired except the roofs, or is that gonna be...
No, the roof should be repaired during the summer. The goal is to repair, yes.
By September of 2024, we will know that what we're up against.
That's the goal that McLaren has set before the markets. I can tell you that. That is the goal that McLaren's has set before the markets. Now, whether that actually occurs or not, that's, that could be totally different. It may take a few more months. It depends on what you, what else you find, because when you go through, you're gonna find some more stuff, I would anticipate, okay? You're gonna be in the classrooms, you're gonna find this or that, you're gonna be...
Never watched HGTV knows that, right?
Yeah.
Once we get in those walls, we've got nothing else. We need electric. But the advantage that, that we, we have EA, if we had not have had EA, you wanna give us that scenario?
If you hadn't had EA, you would have contractors beating down your door right now demanding their money.
Explain what EA is to everyone.
EA is, is a company that FISBIT has an agreement with to come in and manage all these contractors and everything else when you have a large event, okay? So they're the company that came in and managed, you know, Royal Plus and all these different companies that we had in here to get you back up and running as quickly as possible, also to meet the governor's deadline, which was a little tough to meet as far as that goes. So they're, they're the company that actually manages all that, okay? They're the ones who are actually paying the contractors for you right now, okay? They're the ones that are really holding them off of you financially, if you look at it that way, okay? And they're a very good company to work with. They have a, a, a law, a big reputation of being excellent at their job. They're not only in Florida, they're in other states in the United States also.
And what is their fee?
What is their fee? Generally, they take about, I think about 10%, but now they, what their fee comes from, it comes from FEMA, okay? It doesn't come from you, okay? So in the FEMA contract, what you're allowed to do is you're allowed to hire a contractor, okay? And the contractor then submits who manages all this for you, okay? So actually, that comes out of the FEMA dollars. FEMA will be paying their fees, so it doesn't, it doesn't hit you. Yes.
How much are we indebted to EA now?
About five and a half million dollars at this point.
Because it's, it's just our deductible.
Yes.
So as, as we go in, like the ancillary, the projects that are gonna be, that are gonna require ancillary dollars, will FEMA pitch in any of that?
I don't know that, okay? Because again, it may be something that you wanna change, okay? When you're going, going through the roof repairs, you may wanna do that. Insurance is gonna cover it, and FEMA's gonna go, no, we're not gonna cover it. You're gonna have some of those, you're gonna have some of that crop up. That was my anticipation. It may not be as large a number as I think it is. It could be more. It just depends on your decisions about how you're gonna fix some of these things, and you're gonna find out that insurance isn't gonna cover it. FEMA's not gonna cover it, because you wanna fix it slightly differently than it may be right now.
With the, the battle between the three engineers or the two engineers?
Two engineers and a roofing contractor.
On the roofing part. Say our engineer says, no, we're gonna do it this way, and I know you, there's standards, like you said, and the other one's saying, no, we're gonna do this. That's when the third party will come in and say...
That, that's when it, yeah.
Override these two engineers?
I don't know that anybody's gonna override them. It will be a negotiation, and FISBIT will be in that conversation too, and so will the district, okay? Your district personnel, and I know your engineer, but we will all be in there talking. And at a certain point, the markets wanna close this claim out, okay? They, an extended fight doesn't do anybody any good. So we want to come to some kind of resolution, because again, if I have to go to the markets and to McLaren, I'm gonna go, you're exposing yourself to secondary cost, okay? Because you have another storm roll in, it doesn't have to be a hurricane, it could be a tropical storm. If you just have a tropical storm roll in and your roofs aren't repaired as they should be, you're gonna have secondary costs, which the market doesn't want. So it's in everybody's interest to try to resolve that, okay? You're not always gonna get everything you want, okay? That's just the reality in life, you know, anytime you're in negotiation.
We really need to have this resolved probably by May.
Yeah, we're, like I said, I would anticipate that the most it would be, would be 60 days, hopefully.
One more thing, Dave, for me too. So our rates for next year, our insurance rate, do you have any projection and will we get any help at all?
Well, yeah, you can talk to your, I have tried to do that, and Brenda knows that. Your TIVs are gonna go up, your total insured values, that's what it means, okay? Your total insured values, so that means your, your bill is gonna go up, all right? And the reason your TIVs are going up, and it's, and it's across the state of Florida, it really, it's everywhere, because in COVID, the supply chain got so bad that the prices went up for everything, and they haven't came back down yet, okay? Building construction, especially for large projects, for schools, where there's a lot of concrete and also the kind of stuff that you have to have, and the workforce you have to have. You don't have that locally here to actually build this major facility, so they have to import all that. So the farther you are away from that kind of supply for labor and supplies, the more your cost goes up. And that's all calculated in to replace a school for you or to build a school here. So those costs have gone up a little bit. I think you really came off pretty good. I think you came out of about 10% increase in your TIV, which we had some districts that came in at 45% and 50% increase in their total insured value, okay? You can also anticipate from the markets, from what I generally got, okay? And I've had very limited exposure to them, just Charlotte. I haven't been to London yet, okay? And I haven't talked to the Lloyds of London, and I haven't talked into the people who do a lot of your insurance in this program. I would anticipate a double-digit one. So at, at 10%, you could easily look at a 30% increase over your price that you had last year, which, my calculations are close, that'd be an extra $200,000 that you would have to pay just in your insurance for the buildings. An extra $200,000. And that's just a raw figure. I don't, please don't hold me to that, because I have no feedback from the market yet, but if you're just asking me how it looks from the conversations that we had in Charlotte with about 50 of the reinsurance companies that are out there, and I'll talk to another 60 or 70 over in London in a couple of weeks, we'll get a fairly good idea, but you can, I tell you, because we've had claims, because you got hit with a hurricane, you know, it's kinda like if you wreck your automobile, guess what? Your entrance is going up. Well, same thing happens here. Because you got hit, because we were, some of the districts that got hit, you know, we're, we're gonna see an increase.
Now, Dave, we have seen this happen in some other counties, like Lee County, and we've seen it with Panama City with those different hurricanes. Going back to the legislature, did we see where any money came available out of those two previous situations? Where we may have some hope?
Michael was a much different hurricane than the one that we had here, okay? Michael was category five. If there was a category six, it'd probably been a six. You know, it just absolutely tore everything out. And Bay County at that point was only carrying $100 million worth of insurance at that point, when you could easily buy. When we were carrying 250 at that point, for our members, Bay County's only carrying $100 million. Their losses were 500 million, close to six, I think, at the end. And that's just the school district. That's not counting the county and the, and the armed services and everybody else who was in that path as far as that goes. And I think the legislators may have, the legislation may have given them some extra dollars as far as that goes, because they were just so totally devastated.
I know those was bigger counties, but I was just asking.
Yeah. Well, we, the year before, we had IDA, and that hit another one of our, two of our members down there.
Right.
It hit Charlotte County, DeSoto County. That was $125 million loss at this point right now. And you can imagine the deductibles that go with that kind of loss. So very large, very large deductibles that they're having to pay as far as that goes.
Doesn't that seem like a huge deductible for, over 5 million plus deductible on a $15 million claim, like a third?
Well, it goes by building. It's, how they set it up, it's by percentage. It's, it's a 5% wind deductible per building, okay? So that's how it works, and sometimes, and that's an advantageous way to do it versus campus, because we calculated it years back, FISBIT did. The best way to calculate it is by building, because by campus, you can get hit, hit even worse. And it used to be, the year before, we had a 3% wind deductible, but because we got hit with IDA, and IDA hit, okay? The insurance markets went statewide, okay? Statewide, they went to a 5% deductible for everybody. You can't get a 3%, a 3% deductible anymore for commercial accounts or big accounts like this. You just can't get it. We, we, we drove the market for years because we had such good claims experience. If you look at the, the trust by itself, outside of the hurricanes, we have a very good loss ratio. But when you get hit with two hurricanes in a row, it, it drives your cost up. But it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter if we get hit with a hurricane or the trust gets hit or somebody else get hit with it, okay? It's an international market, okay? And all it does is it just drives it up across the board, because for years, our, our premiums went up and up and up, okay? Even though we were having absolutely no events hit us, and they would say it doesn't matter. If it hits in South Florida or the Panhandle, you know, over in St. John's County, doesn't matter where it hits, okay? We consider all of Florida to be a hurricane risk, and everybody has to pay. We consider all of Florida to be a hurricane risk and everybody has to pay that, that, those premiums.
Well, you used to, you used to have a pool, like for health insurance, it depended on where you live and everybody says if you were north of Ocala, you were pretty good. But if you got south of Ocala, you paid a lot more because of the difference in ages of people. But apparently from what you're saying, that's not the case.
Not, not, not for insurance in Florida. Um, as far as that goes. Now personally, if you live uh, on the Georgia line, okay, in the center of the state, up in there, you might get a little bit better rate than you're going to get in South Florida. Um, you know, as far as that goes. But as far as the, the markets are concerned, okay, they treat all of Florida as coastal. That's how they look at you. They look at you all as coastal and they, they have their explanations for it. I don't always agree with it as far as that goes. But traditionally, when you have a hurricane come in, okay, even a bad hurricane, it, about a 40 mile wide, okay, and about 40 or 50 miles steep is where the really big damage occurs. Once you get past that, you're still going to have some damages, but you're not going to have the catastrophic damage. Okay, that you have in that 40 mile wide, 40 to 50 miles steep. Okay, that's where you get slammed.
Well, I look forward to hearing what that bottom line is.
You sure you want to look forward to it? I know, you got to know, you got to know, but it's.
The better off we are. We've got a lot of people hanging on a lot of things that need, when they need decisions to be made and we just.
No, I agree. That's part of the reason, um, you know, that I'm here so that you understand generally where you're at as far as the board goes. Um, you know, and how we're really trying to manage it for you because we want this done and complete as quick as possible. We want you to get back in business, um, fixed totally. Okay, we want you back in business, fixed totally, and that's what we tell the markets. Um, and they're in agreement with that. They, they have an obligation. We paid them a lot of money. Okay, for this insurance, okay, and we need it now and their obligation is to um, you know, do their due diligence, but fix everything that's supposed to be fixed. And that's our, we're, we're your advocate for that. Um, and if you have an issue, and Chris knows this, um, and so does Brenda, if you have an issue, you know, we're the ones that go fight for you. Okay, we're, we're in your corner, in other words. Uh, we just want to make sure that you get everything you're entitled to. We're not asking them to do any more. We just want to make sure you get everything you're entitled to.
Well, thank you for your help.
Okay?
Thanks, Dave.
Anything else?
No, you've done enough.
Y'all have, yeah, I wish I had better news as far as that goes, but um, you know.
Well, the speediness of it is a, is a blessing because like I said, we, we've got to get these fixed before another hurricane hits or another storm hits or whatever. And, and that, um, with everything that's going on in the state with, you know, they're still working on. They're, they didn't even separate the money in the counties from the, what, which one in Lee County, uh, down E, was it E?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So all that's still in one wad as far as the government is concerned. And um.
Yeah, how it works is, it's, how it's supposed to work is supposed to, you know, the claims are supposed to come up from like the district, the county to the state, then the state to the feds. And then the money goes back down that way too, just so you also understand. The state is also your advocate with FEMA. Um, and they have been um, an advocate, they've been, the state has been an advocate uh, for you. The other thing I will tell you is I was pulled in probably 10 years ago um, to the state uh, recovery management. And they said, if FEMA comes back to you later on, I'm not going to be here later on, I'm, I'm going to retire pretty soon. But for those of you that are going to be here, FEMA comes in five, six, seven, eight years later and says, you uh, lost money because we, we uh, did a different audit and we think we paid you too much. The state will, has told me, don't do that. They have to go to the state, okay? That's how it works. Then the state decides whether you owe that money or not. Okay, just, that's just a, a piece of advice for down the road. If they come back at you, okay, later on, uh, go to the state and say, okay, FEMA said we owe this. And you make sure the state is in that um, mix because traditionally, that's what FEMA does. They go through and re-audit, re-audit, and re-audit and they come back and say, we paid you a million dollars too much. Give us that million dollars. Well, make sure you go to the state. Okay, and make sure that the state is involved in it and the state determines whether you're going to owe it. Because actually, it's the state that owes it, not you. Okay?
Thank you, Dave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, I apologize. First of all, I apologize. I got detained and um, even got so detained, I did not bring my glasses with me. So uh, these designer glasses, please excuse, but thank you. Okay, where are we at now?
Um, you need to go back. We just did prayer and pledge. We just did prayer and pledge, so we need to approve the agenda and approve the minutes. We didn't do that. You need to do that.
Aight, so we're, we're at items of interest, Rock.
No, we need to go back to number, um.
Oh, you got to go back to adoption of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're at the adoption of the agenda this evening and uh, so carry the board.
Motion.
Motion being made by Ms. Carlton.
Oh, wait, she wanted us, we, we did add.
Well, okay, uh, uh, updated item here uh, for uh, 4.01 purchase orders and so forth. Item number three will be added. And uh, is that all we got here? I think so.
Yes.
So my motion's still.
I second the motion with the minutes.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aight, so carried. Brings us down to the approval of the minutes of our January the 16th uh, board meeting along with executive session.
Motion.
Uh, Ms. Mathis makes that motion. Ms. Agner seconds it.
Um, I need to note, um, a correction. Um, under the minutes, it has me with the prayer and pledge. However, I just did the prayer. It was your bunny with the pledge, so we do need to correct that.
You.
She only did the prayer.
And we led in the, in the pledge. And that, is it something you really want?
Yes, I would like the minister to reflect that.
Aight. Okay. Uh, any other corrections and so forth? Aide, if not, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Appreciate the workshop, the information and so forth that were shared. Um, I kind of, it's kind of what it is. I mean, it's kind of, it's rough, but that's no more than what we can do. All right, now this brings us down to the items of interest by the public and uh, from the looks this evening, we've got quite a few and uh, we would just ask if you would like to address the board, that you try to hold your comments to less than, no more than three minutes. Um, and uh, so do we have someone tonight that would like to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
Dame, thank you for having me. Um, as you know, I'm a 34-year veteran of your school district. I've only worked in Taylor County. I'm very proud of that. Very proud. Last year, or should I say for this past year, I have represented you as Taylor County's Teacher of the Year and was so honored to do that. But all of this talk of contracts got me thinking. When was the first time I signed my contract? Were you here, Ms. Carlton, in 1989?
1989.
Okay. I predate Ms. Carlton. But uh, signed my contract in 1989. Lester Paget was the superintendent, okay? So I've been around for a minute, seen a thing or two. Like I say, when the school that housed your first teaching assignment no longer exists, you've seen a thing or two. So I worked over at Perry Primary, Claude Cruz, as my first principal. Last week, the veteran teachers, several of us, got together with Ms. Valentine. She was so gracious. She met with us in her office. "I don't like to do this," he said, she said, they said. I like to just go to the source, find out what's going on. She answered so many questions. We have a jewel in Ms. Valentine. I still don't understand it because my brain doesn't work that way. I'm just a teacher. That's all I want to do. All of these statutes and uh, you know, all of the legalities and the math. My brain does not math. But she made it to where I could understand it. We came up with a plan. We said, hey, how about this? We can honor the new teachers. We could honor the veteran teachers. Sounded great. We're asking teachers, that's all we want, is a good pay and planning time. Seems pretty simple, doesn't it? I've asked the question, who in our district doesn't have planning time? I don't know, but I'd like for you to find out. The principals are here. Let's find out. Whoever doesn't have planning time, let's get them some planning time. We have wonderful lessons we want to prepare because we teach every day. I've been doing it every day for 34 years. So let's find out and let's get that fixed. Let's get our pay to where we want it, to where we can be competitive with the surrounding counties. Don't really care about St. John's County. I keep hearing about St. John's County. They're, they're far away from us, but competitively in our area, let's get competitive in that area. And let's get your teachers some planning time. We just want to do that. I want to teach. I don't want to be a lobbyist. I want to teach. I'm in drop. I'm ready to drop. Okay? We just want to teach and be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blue.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we sure we don't have any more seating available? I know I've asked. Dan, do you know if we have any more seating available?
Mr. Anderson? Do we have any we can bring out? There's a lot of people on the floor and standing. Like Chuck made the set.
You're good.
Good evening. I have come to speak on behalf of the veteran teachers of this district. The ones who began teaching a group of students and are now teaching their children. The ones whose former students now teach in rooms beside them. We continue holding, we hold continuing contracts, which were given as a sign of honor, but now hold us back financially. We are still here. We are still teaching and we have asked to be noticed. I would like to offer thanks so that everyone can know who noticed us. Thank you to the community who answered the call to action. You came, you spoke, you were heard. Thank you to the board who listened and returned with an offer that was an answer to this public cry. Thank you to Ashley Valentine, who cleared her calendar to accommodate these questions. We did not understand the offers. We did not understand the statutes. And you took an afternoon to discuss it. It was during this discussion that we questioned what more could be done. You were open and willing to look for opportunities to honor the veterans, the ones currently held hostage by statutes. Together, we found an option and you allowed us to offer insight on what it should look like to reward those at the very top. The board and the superintendent were in agreement with our plan and we are again thankful. I want the community to know that your cry was heard. It opened the door for veterans to advocate for themselves and the district answered. Was it perfect? No. Our pensions, which we depend upon, will not reflect this increase, but it is a start. I hope that we can move forward and remain focused on what is important for the students of this district. Let's return to our classrooms and teach. Let's go home to our families instead of to bargaining meetings. Let's agree on reasonable terms and fair pay to everyone and get back to what we came here to do. Teach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, decided to jump up while I could. Okay, whatever it takes, that has been my mantra for the last 25 years. It took me a full year as a classroom teacher in Taylor County in 1997 to fully grasp that I would, on a daily basis, sometimes several times a day, need to convince myself that I could do it. Even when things got hard, that I could remind myself of my why. I could tell myself again that as an educator, I am the defining factor within the four walls of my classroom and I will do whatever it takes for my students. Whatever it takes to encourage them when they want to quit. Whatever it takes to, uh, to reward them when they don't. Whatever it takes to support them when the work seems too hard. Whatever it takes to provide the things that they need at school to learn. Like spending literally thousands of dollars a year in supplies, learning materials, furniture, and sometimes even the things that they need at home, like jackets, socks, underwear, sheets for their bed and blow-up mattresses so they don't have to sleep on the floor. As a teacher, I will always do whatever it takes to show my kids that they can be lifelong learners and that they can have fun doing it. I can truly say that I and my colleagues have done all of these things for the students of this community and the students of your districts because we will do whatever it takes every single time. So as board members, you should be asking yourselves, why? Why do teachers do all of these things? What drives us to persist when student behavior can quite honestly be a struggle? Parent behavior can be even more difficult at times. And the DOE continues in its relentless efforts to squeeze out veteran teachers. Even you, our board, at times votes as though we are inconsequential. Well, I can answer for you the why your teachers do all these things. It's because we are passionate about what we do. This is more than just a job to us. We have been called into this career and we are willing to do whatever it takes because our work here has been established and ordered and we simply cannot walk away from it. Veteran teachers are not being rewarded for their dedicated service and yet we are the ones not walking away. Please listen because particularly for those of us who have been around for two, almost three decades, we came into teaching when the money was terrible, but at least the retirement gave us hope. Right now, we can't even look forward to that. It's passion for children, for learning and for our community that paved our way into education. Our passion drives our never-give-up attitude. It fuels our determination to do whatever it takes. We need you to know that the same passion that led us into education decades ago in your district is what brings us here tonight. Tonight, veteran teachers and the community are asking you to have the same whatever-it-takes approach to our pay raises as we have to teaching and nurturing students from your districts who are in our classrooms every day.
Thank you.
I've been in education, teaching and in a different position for 33 years. In 25, 26 years have been in Taylor County. Three years were in Hillsborough County. And when I left Taylor County and went to Hillsborough County, I was on a professional scholarship, a professional certificate. And the past 10 years, I have not been. So my journey has been like everybody else. It's a little bit different. Everybody's had a different journey in their career. And um, we were talking about this at our meeting yesterday. The professional certificate and the, you know, everybody's a little bit different and they're, they're, I'm a little bit nervous, sorry. I, I want to say thank you to um, everybody for the comments that we made yesterday in our meeting and the work, hard work everybody has done to make sure that we work on our contract and our salary steps together. And I appreciate all the work that you've done to help young teachers get what they deserve to teach. But the, what they have to do at the top, all the other veteran teachers that are going to be here for some more time, um, they deserve to make more at the top. I have put off my decision to go into drop just to work through this process. That's what I shared yesterday. I could have gone into drop in December. But I've waited because I wanted to know what would happen. And I'm probably not the only person that could have made that decision. I looked on the sheet the other day and there's not that many of us. There's more people in the middle. And there'll be some more people in the next few years that are working toward the end. And it's really important to make a decision on what we're all worth and the new people that are, that drawing people into our community and having um, them feel that they're valued and want to stay. And one of the things that I've been thinking about and I've said to some people, do we go to those recruiting events to draw people here or do we not? There's plenty of them. When I moved to Hillsborough County, I went to one. And there were hundreds and hundreds of people going to those events to be um, employed at a school from different areas. We can go to that. This is a really good school district. This is a really good school district, but our benefits are not like other school districts. And we've had some challenges and we can bring people here. We have terrific, unbelievable administrators and teachers. And we have really good kids who are eager to learn. And I think it's really important that not only do we have benefits that are beneficial to our teachers and make them feel worth, but to go out and draw people here. Go places, take teachers and administrators and other people and go to those events. There's a lot of them. Don't just advertise on the internet for that, but go out to those places and, and show some things about our community and our schools and draw people here. It's really important to do that. We're not going to get those people and if they come, they're not going to stay.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Kreidler and I'm a member of the union. I wasn't going to say this part, but I somehow feel moved to. Veteran teacher, might be the oldest one in the room. Working on year 43. Evelyn Karakis was my first principal at Perry Primary. Seen a lot, hope to see a lot more. I love this town. Absolutely love it. I moved here from Michigan, got sand in my shoes and will be here. Will be here. I'm sorry, my phone just got off the page, sorry. Okay, so in my classroom, I like to say perception is truth. And if I think I taught a jam up lesson and everybody learned it, that doesn't have to be the truth. You know? If they don't believe that they know it, then it doesn't really matter what I believe. So I was thinking maybe we could use this time to come together on some shared positive truths. So in my class, if you agree or if you feel like you own that or you believe it, you can do like a thumbs up. You can do like that. If I, I thought I taught you, but you don't get it, you just go eh. And I'm like, I know, I need to start over, okay? Let's focus on what we know. The children of Taylor County will determine the future of our wonderful town. Right, we can pretty much agree on that. I mean, they are and it's pretty awesome that they're going to. We got good kids. Their education is the reason that we are all here. Yeah, it is. We wouldn't be here if we didn't believe it. Data has shown from numerous studies that children learn best when they are presented a well-planned lesson with a motivated, caring teacher. That approves it. So if we follow that logic, time for actual planning is important enough to memorialize in a document. I heard it said, Ms. Blue, you're concerned and thank you, we all need planning time? Yeah, we get it. We all do get planning time and thank you to our administrators. We know you carve it out and we appreciate it. What we are asking for is that it be memorialized in a document. Because what we've seen in this world, not this town, this world, is that things need to be memorialized if we hold them important. So planning is important enough to memorialize in a binding document and valuing teachers will pay out with excellent long-term dividends. Do we kind of agree with that? Okay, good. Good thumbs up, some sideways, it's okay for the job. And lastly, we all know that you have the power to fix this. It's time. Please fix it. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, good evening and thank you for my opportunity to speak here tonight. I'll try to make this brief and everybody's time is valuable. My name is Kylie Cole and I am the fourth and fifth grade teacher at Steen Hatchie. I teach ELA writing and social studies. This is my 18th year teaching, but my fourth year in this district and it's all been in Steen Hatchie. I'm a highly effective veteran teacher as well as a mentor teacher at Steen Hatchie. I'd like to address my concerns to the board as well as the union. I stand here today neutral. I am not a union member. I hope to offer another perspective to the low morale that is plaguing our district as well as offer some encouraging ideas for both parties that may help guide us in a more positive and unified direction. One reason for the low morale is just, if you've heard, is the salary issues and the lack of communication regarding it. Although the salary schedule is posted and has been approved by the board, it's great information. To be honest, I have no idea how much money I make. It's not very clear. There's a lot of lack of communication. So understandably, teachers look at it and they're confused. I don't know if I'm on performance. I don't know if I'm on year 18. I have no idea. I just get a paycheck. So annual versus professional differences can seem unfair to some if it's not communicated properly. I'm a highly effective teacher. I plan on being a highly effective teacher, but I'm on an annual contract. Why am I getting paid more than my peers on a professional contract? That's not fair. That doesn't seem fair. They work just as hard as I do. She's effective, I'm effective, professional, annual, we need to get paid the same. Don't get me wrong, I'm sure there's a legitimate reason for that difference, but it just hasn't been communicated. And I know you guys have been tasked with a hard job of getting our salaries up, you know, Mr., our governor has, has, you know, wanted our increases in salaries and of course, we want that for our beginning teachers as well. But we also do need to retain our veteran teachers. This is going to require more equality and an evenly distributed pay scale increasing in some kind of fair and sensible increment. According to the DOE, Taylor County teachers are ranked at the bottom eighth lowest in the state. Dixie's 15th, Lafayette's 29th. That's why it's important for both parties to negotiate and agree upon fair pay for all the teachers regardless of what type of contract they hold and if they're a beginning year or a veteran teacher. Ms. Bishers, thank you for your summary and the update of the bargaining. It was very helpful to see that there are two perspectives for this. And that's actually the first update I've ever gotten. Again, I'm not a union member. It was nice to see that you guys are offering the $750 one-time pay for the veteran teachers. When I read that, I got excited, but then I finished the sentence to those that have been here since 2011. I'm not going to, you know, qualify for that, but that's okay. I've only been here four years. I'll be happy to, I'll be happy for those of you that, you know, will be receiving that. So where does the solution lie? How can we get our district's trust and feelings and support back? First, let's all of us, union and board members, use integrity, be professionals, show honest stewardship of the government funds that you have been endowed to and fix the salary schedules as well as this effective, highly effective annual, you know, professional contract. Just make it fair. Every decision that both parties agree on, need to ensure that it will unify the staff and not create division and competition and ultimately hurt feelings. And this, all of this, let's give the two, let's, I'm sorry, let's give this to this group and let's give this to that group, that doesn't solve any problems. You see, when you compensate some and not the others, it leads to feelings of unappreciation just like that's been spoken about. My only suggestion to this conundrum is maybe pay based on our performance and split the rest. Which leads me to my next suggestion. Understand of the insurance and the community impacts that we've had this year and are there ways that maybe we could spend less in other areas? I'm sure maybe energy could be one. Sumter County, which was the district that I worked in for the other time before I came here, they did small changes and their, their energy audits and they were shutting down computers and monitors and the AC and they were just monitoring a lot of that. My husband works for Duke, so I might be able to pull some strings and get him to, you know, get them to come and audit that for you guys and give you some suggestions on how to get the energy down a little bit. But my last suggestion is maybe to do a climate survey. This can be easily done through Microsoft Forms and it can be set to anonymous. You want to know what the climate of this room is? Let us take an anonymous survey. Give us the opportunity to be heard without not having our name have to be attached to it. But take the time to understand and to address the issues that we're concerned with and communicate that you're working towards making Taylor County the best place to work. In conclusion, board, I implore you to reevaluate and union, how you are going to compensate these teachers, whether they're veteran or beginning. Take your school and district climate concerns seriously as well as ensuring your staff gets incentives they've been promised and the funds are distributed with integrity. To the union, I encourage to show fair representation of all teachers, union members or not. Some of the suggestions and proposals for the union, quite honest, I don't agree with. So I just feel like, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't really agree and that's okay. Either way, everybody needs to do better. We need to work better and we need to stop trying to push our own agendas. Let me leave you with a thought and this goes for the board and union alike. We have got to get a positive morale back in this district and unfortunately, it's going to take money and humility to solve that. Let's not be a district or a union that pays just enough to keep them from quitting so a staff in turn turns into teachers that work just enough not to get fired.
Amen.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Lowry and I currently have three children in your, in Taylor County school districts. Grade kindergarten, fourth and sixth. A few weeks ago, it was brought to my attention, the ongoing negotiations between our beloved veteran teachers and you ladies and gentlemen. Sorry. Sorry, guys, I lost my spot. My heart immediately knew I want to do whatever in my power to help our teachers and our community reach a well-deserved and long overdue increase in their earnings. As I sat here in this very room a few weeks ago, my heart was shattered as I listened to one teacher and community member at a time plead their cases. So much information was shared, it took days to truly, for it to all truly register. The severity of the situation was unheard of. But one thing stuck out that I keep coming back to. Our superintendent made the statement that her priorities lie with bringing in new teachers. Well, call me crazy, but it has always been my personal experience. When we're looking for new employees, you first reach out to your employees to help spread the word and can usually help weed out as long as bring in potential new hires. But that's not the case here because why? Why would our veteran teachers who invest so much time, love and energy into our students recommend a school system that they have fallen to the back burner of? Instead of being able to share how respected and safe they feel as veteran teachers in our school system, they're forced to tell the truth that in fact, they have been forgotten and undervalued. The second, the second statement that I heard make, made was our community will not truly know the impact of Hurricane Idalia and the Foley Mill closing until the local taxes come out this year. Well, my family was directly impacted by the Foley Mill closing and although we are extremely fortunate that my husband still has his job as a contracting crane technician, it did change our daily lives as he is now traveling Monday through Friday and missing so many important milestones in our young children's lives. We recently sat our kids down and discussed with them the possibility of relocating to allow their father to once again be a part of their day to day. The discussion was met with tears and anger and sadness as they expressed leaving Taylor County was not something they wanted or felt in their hearts was the right decision for our family. We dug deeper, the same reason continued to surface and remained at the top. The reason they do not want to relocate is because of your teachers. Include, none of them, including our five-year-old who just recently left for Christmas break, only to return to her teacher not coming back in her class as a result, was disassembled and placed into other rooms, leaving her without any friends or sense of normal. This morning, she cried and claimed to me for the first time since her early pre-K days as the sweet staff helped me try to calm the fast arising meltdown. I reminded her she could stop by and say good morning to Ms. Ballot. The tears quickly stopped. The tears quickly stopped as she hopped out of the car to make her way to her former pre-K teacher's room where she knew without a doubt she'd be met with love and a gentle reminder she was a big girl and could take on the day ahead. This speaks volume for the impact that your teachers are leaving in our students' lives. We re, okay, sorry. It is because of this reason that my husband and I have decided to stay in Taylor County and continue to spend our tax dollars here. That's the reason. Okay, now it is, it is with great honor and the help of Ms. O., Ms. Bishop, Ms. Ratliff, Ms. Teresa and new the Mr. Walker, that I get to introduce you guys to my A.B. Honorable Student, Mr. Levi Lowry.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? If not, we thank you for your comments this evening. And once again, I know it come from each one's heart and we appreciate that. Okay? All right, with that said, then we'll move on. And each of you are welcome to continue to stay and if you see fit to need to leave, you're welcome to do just that. The consent items were approved by the adoption of the agenda and this brings us down to 12.05, which is an appointment of administrative personnel, appointment of Jesse Brazwell as the district athletic director.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Mathis makes that motion. All right, Ms. Agner seconds it.
Can I ask?
Discussion.
Oh, can we get the start date?
I'm sorry.
Start, his start date.
Start date, okay.
On his contract. So he will have, I don't, we said we had to have two contracts or just an extended? We'll have two contracts. We'll have one where he begins pretty. Do a 13 month.
As long as the terms are clear in the contract. I guess it depends on how y'all want to do that.
So I think that we'd like to do just one contract. It would be, you know, normally we only do a 12-month contract, but since we're not at that date yet, we're going to go ahead and do it now. Like we'd like to start tomorrow. Everything is cleared. And he would just have a longer contract for this one year rather than a 12-month he would have.
Because it's not going July or?
Right, because Springfield, they're already starting right now is the time where you get your head coach, AD in there.
What day is he available to start?
When are you available?
Tomorrow.
He's right there.
Oh. You'll be there tomorrow? He's already been in the school.
Can that be your start day then?
He's already been in the school. I know, but he's.
Is there a separate contract for head coach than the athletic, that we did?
The AD.
So we just have one title now?
Yes, ma'am.
But you are the head coach.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Can I ask a question, Ms. Bishers? Can you kind of give us, you know, I know there was coverage in the newspaper and I do have in my comments this evening, I would like to bring up a concern that I want to ask. I know we've stated it before, but can you kind of give us some information as to what led to him being the selection? Was there like a certain number of applicants? Was it narrowed down and a selection? Can you please give us that information?
Yes, ma'am. So there were over 20 applicants. I assembled a community group of gentlemen that agreed to help me and Mr. McCoy, who is the Taylor County High School principal, go through them. We used two different rubrics. So the first rubric we used went along with a resume and looked at things like experience, degrees, things like that. We rated those. I had already said, promised that all of our hometown, hometown candidates would automatically get an interview as well as those who had claimed veterans preference because that's, that's just what you do. And so we whittled those down to, I think we had about 12 that we identified. A couple of them dropped out kind of last minute. They'd gotten other offers or, you know, for whatever reason, I don't know, they only say. So we interviewed the remainder and in that interview committee, we used a rubric as well. We asked the same five questions to each candidate and we scored them on a rubric for each question from one to five. We also gave those candidates the opportunity to let us get to know them, anything that they wanted to tell us. In other words, you know, just like, why should you be the one, you know? And so that's what we did. We put the two rubrics together. One was 50%, the other one was 50%. I got Mr. Brazwell over there. So that's the hiring process. So that's what we've gone through so far.
Was there a number of? Was there a number of, um, interviews, like, when it was narrowed down, did you go from the 12 to like six, and they went through one round, or?
Did have a second round of interviews, yes, ma'am, we did. So, after we rated both sides, um, we went back and took the top three applicants and re-interviewed those top three.
Okay.
And, I should say, that's when we got Mr. Braswell.
Okay, now, was there a head to the committee? I know you mentioned that Ms., would it been at Ms. McCoy's school? Was there a lead person on this committee that brought the recommendations?
They all recommended together.
Okay.
Because we all sat in the same room together, there wasn't, I mean, Mr. Salz is the one who kind of helped put me in touch with those other gentlemen.
So, basically, Mr. Braswell was recommended from the committee, that was brought to you, and that's what you bring us, to us as the board?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And it was unanimous.
Okay.
Donnell, thank you for asking. It was unanimous decision, all of those on the committee recommended Mr. Braswell.
Okay, do we, a start date added to the motion, or how do you?
You just, you just, it's just a longer contract for the first year.
Okay, so it would be January 31st would be the start date?
Okay.
But we don't need it added to the motion, so?
Okay, all right, so we do have a motion, uh, and second, any other, any other questions or discussion?
Yes, I do, um, in regards to Mr., I understand he's, will be our head coach, but what, what exactly does his duties entail? Right, I understand that, but is it just, um, he'll be the head football coach, A.D., what exactly does his duties entail?
Sure, so it, it, I know that you're.
Yeah.
So, so the public in here, so the athletic director, if you want to look at that, um, job description, he will be putting all the, that information into, it used to be C2C schools, and now it's called home campus, so he has to keep up with the grades, it's not just for football, because, um, remember, we created this as a district athletic director. So, volleyball, softball, baseball, soccer, everything, making sure those kids are not only eligible to play at that semester, but also, he's the one that's going to be, I, I don't want to say like a graduation coach, but he's like, if you think of a graduation coach, right, graduation coach, make sure those kids are on track to have their credits to graduate. So, he's like that, but in the athletic world, I guess you could say, um, making sure that they're not just eligible the semester before, but that they remain eligible. So, staying on top of those athletes and going, you know, this is what you got to have to get to the next level, if you want to go play, you know, in college. Or if you don't want to play in college, but just remain eligible, and these are some things you can do, and, um, so really just another force of academics in that area. Um, another thing he'll do is he'll be out in our public speaking, letting the community know, um, what Taylor County High School has going on, and the way of athletics, and how they can be involved, and how they can partner with us. He'll also be helping Ms. McCoy, um, and her other A.P.s and guidance counselors in that, any aspects she may need, um, if a student is, um, is particularly an athlete, not showing his best self, I should say, um, that will be up to Mr. Braswell to help with those areas of, it could be anything from grades to discipline, calling parents, um, getting, he'll help with donations, um, getting fundraisers done to help support things that we need, like new equipment. He's got some big dreams, I don't want to like speak for him, I'll, I'll let him.
Well, my next question was, now, with him coming, and again, us moving in this direction was to really, you know, reevaluate our football program and what we offer, and I know in the past with student athletes, the conversation always came up, that it was more so we was getting students across the stage versus allowing, you know, really helping students to graduate and be college-ready, or, you know, D1-ready or whatever. But what advantage with Mr. Braswell coming in as this, and us removing the position from a supplemental to actually administrative, would it offer far as our high school really being able to offer classes that will also allow athletes to be D1-ready and able to, you know, seek scholarships and seek, um, interests, you know, that we haven't been able to necessarily do before, because I know it's came up before, that we don't offer classes, so it's like we go from getting them ready for D1 to just getting them across the stage, but what are we going to do different as a district in offering classes and really opportunities to compete at the next level?
So, in the past, we've had a football coach that has taught P.E. all day.
Okay.
And so, as far as getting film uploaded to those sites that they need to go to for colleges to come see, to come to recruiting, as far as, um, scheduling things like this last year, I know that, I think we might have went to one camp, I mean, fundraising for those camps, all those things that are tied, tied to those things, knowing the classes that they have to take, that the colleges will actually accept, because like, they're very picky when it comes to athletes, like, if you want to go to a D1 school, like, there's some credit recovery things that you, that aren't going to make the cut. So, he, that's another thing that Mr. Braswell will be, will be doing, making sure that the classes that are taken are going to be, are going to be accepted into those, into those, when they get put in the portal, which is what they, those athletes get put into now.
All right, and with him being athletic director in regards to all our sports, I'm assuming this is going to also offer opportunities for these other sports, when it comes to recruiters, you know, being able to get in here and really look at our students and work with our students, as well as offer them the different benefits of film and all that, because these are concerns that I'm hearing from athletes, that this is what other districts are providing, but we don't provide this, so I'm just wondering with us, you know, doing something different, and again, is raising a lot of concern with this been administrative position, what truly are we going to see out of this in regards to the fruit of it, to offer those different pathways for all our students? So, I'm just wondering.
Hope you're going to see more scholarship, more kids that can qualify for that.
Okay.
And I don't want to, I mean, Mr. Braswell can tell you some things, he's already been on the phone with colleges, I think we've already got some colleges that have, that are, that were not already, I'm going to let you speak to this, like, I'm not going to speak every.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest thing is, is one simple thing is, just today, I was on the phone with Huddle Focus, so what Huddle Focus is, is a camera that mounts to what will soon read up our press box and follows each, each sport that will ever read up here. It also goes to our gym, so everything we do is filmed. So, instead of football paying $3,000 to use Huddle, we get all of our scores together, the total package is $9,500. Something just as simple as that, to provide film for all of our athletes, is something that I'm looking to, you know, and that's one small thing. Making, I think academics is the biggest thing, you know, you got to make sure of the freshmen and the classes, you know, that they can clear, you know, get to clearance. So, understanding that and making sure that, that from a young age, or just a freshman, is super important, but those are just a few things.
Okay.
You know, and have already started on.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All righty, when motion second's been made, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
And welcome aboard, yeah.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
And trust me, we all really do love each other.
You might not have caught us at our best moment, but. We are a friendly bunch.
This brings us down to item 12.17, termination of employee, uh, position number 003279902.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Mathis makes that motion.
Second.
All right, Ms. Carlton seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye, so carried. Item 12.23, administrative replacement, reassignment of employee, Ms. Pule, Director of Personnel is requesting to transfer teacher aide position 0141513007, hour nine months, from T.S. to the E.S.E. to work with the SNAP program. This position is currently vacant.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Carlton makes that motion.
Second.
All right, Ms. Agner seconds it.
Is this actually just a transfer of a position, or is this a transfer of an employee, Ms. Pule?
Just a position they have.
Just a position? Okay, thank you.
All right.
That's good, I just needed to know.
We did.
Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. This brings us down to the items of interest by the superintendent and the board, Ms. Bishers.
Okay, let's go to make sure that I say this correctly. Um, so, this coming up, well, next, a week from today, next Tuesday, um, at 1:30, our St. Hatchie principal, Mr. Jimmy Bray, is going to be honored. Um, he has been, he will be receiving Principal Leadership Award. The Principal Leadership Award Program recognizes and rewards principals at schools with large populations of at-risk students, who students outperform students at other schools with similar, similar populations. So, I'm very proud of him, part of that is, he'll be recognized at this thing, they'll do another thing that he'll be able to, um, go to down in Winter Park in April, and they'll pay for all of that, um, he'll receive $1,000 cash prize. He will also have the opportunity to nominate one student from his school to receive a two-year Academic A-plus Challenge Match Scholarship. So, um, I invite the board members next Tuesday at 1:30 to go to St. Hatchie, um, and our, many of ours.
Is it at 1:30 or 2:30?
Uh, 1:30, I'm sorry.
At the school?
At the school.
Yes.
And, um, I've also sent that information on over to the newspaper, and, um, several people from the district office, as we're able, are also going to go down and celebrate Mr. Bray, because they've really worked very hard at that school, and, um, and, you know, hasn't been just an A one time, we've said this many times, that they didn't just get an A one year, um, this is the fourth year, I think, that they've been an A, so, didn't just get one, they've kept it, so, proud that he's being recognized.
Is that it?
Yep, that's it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Mall? Do we need executive session? Okay, all righty, Ms. Donnell?
Yes, I got a number of things. Um, first, I want to, um, again, thank the community for coming out tonight, I want to thank those that got up and spoke. It's always very hard when you get up here, you get in front of a large crowd, to really, um, stay focused, and, you know, really get through what you're trying to say, and, um, that, it just takes a lot of courage to do that, so I do not take that lightly, so I want to thank, um, the individuals that came up here tonight. I also want to highlight the Celebrate Literacy Week, um, it was really nice, being able to just see the different things that was going on in the district as a whole, um, and how each school took that approach and how they went about doing that. I think I seen where different people from the community came in and did some reading, I seen where students were invited to different schools and did reading, so, just the different ways that, um, our administrators and our staff went about, um, planning that, is always exciting to see that. Um, I was really excited to see, um, I think it was a chancellor that came from DOE and visit peer primary, um, so that was very exciting to see how, um, not just that we right down the road, but knowing that, you know, we're getting, you know, different visitors that get in, that come in to see the great things that we got going on, since a lot of times, the great things don't get the attention that it should. Also, another concern that I wanted to express was, um, in last week, when we was having the feedback from the community, not just in regards to, um, salary, we had some concern that came in regards to the whole evacuation situation, the reunification, and I know, um, we had different members that came up from the community, as well as different people reached out, um, constituents reached out to the board members, and I shared that information, but I didn't ask, um, last week for it to be reflected in the minutes, but I'm going to ask Shanna there to be reflected in the minutes, that again, we do workshop, um, our reunification far as what to place, how we're going to move forward in, um, addressing that concern, just making sure that again, um, we're just standing on top of different things, so I'm going to ask that it be reflected in the minutes, that we do, um, you know, in a future date, hopefully not far from now, but that it is workshopped. Um, I'm also going to ask that it's reflected in the minutes, that, um, as soon as we can get information in regards to the workshop tonight, um, far as, you know, that information about each addition, you know, the inventory that I asked about, I'm going to ask that does come to us, because I think we need to keep our eyes on that, being that it looks like that's just really going to be costly, and we got to figure out where we're going to get the money. I know last year, I brought up about appropriations, I'm going to ask again, and it reflect in the minutes, that we really look at requesting appropriation this year, I don't think as a district, we're going to be to not do that. I think with issues that has arise just from the hurricane, as well as just salaries, we really need to be looking at what we need to do far as appropriations, so I'm going to ask that we get ahead of that, so come November, we can be putting in something, not, you know, trying to figure out what we want to do, if we're going to do it. I think this year, we need to see that that happens, that we as a board meet and figure out about how we go about asking for appropriations. Again, with, I'm going to congratulate Mr. Braswell, I think he left, I'm excited to see how this takes off, I'm excited that, you know, to see what opportunity is going to offer us with all our athletics, not just football, because I think all our athletics right now are not really getting the attention it deserve, as well as other things in our district, but I'm just really, um, excited to see how that's going to take off, but I do have a concern, and I don't know what control we have here, I know in the past, I voiced concern about stuff getting announced to the community before we approve it as a board, so I'm just ask again, that again, maybe we, um, need to try to work on making sure, um, advertisement, um, selection of employees, that we board approve before it get announced to the community. I think it'll do us some good if we really look at that, because it seem like stuff get out, and it gets, information get out, and it's not really giving the full truth to different things, and I just think it cause a lot of black backlash, and it does more harm than good for something to get, um, in the community before we board approve it. So, I'm going to ask that we, you know, take a look at that, and then also just what was addressed tonight in regards to the concerns that has came from the community. Again, as a board, and I'm speaking as a board, but I'm also speak, um, in regards to me as a board member, I do not take lightly what was expressed tonight in regards to salaries, was in, was expressed in regards as to district and ours, we are one community, and, um, in community is unity, and again, these buildings, this district, it doesn't belong to the board. Um, we are the stewards of the district, because we sit here as board members, but we are one district, and we are here to do a job. It's just like a body, the hands can't work without the fingers, you know, one piece of the body can't work without the other, and that's the same thing when it comes to us as a school district, when it comes to the different components and the parts and the different aspects of what we do in regards to our community education. So, um, I just really hope, you know, as, you know, the one teachers stated tonight, that as we move forward, that we able to move forward as one, and decisions that's been made, and all the different variables that come into play in making those decisions. Again, we're a little local body, but there's different levels of government, yes, when it's local, it kind of hit home first, but it's, it comes down, and I know for me as a board member, when I got involved, I was involved as a parent before I became a board member, but when I got involved as a board member, I had to learn the different aspects and the responsibilities of all my jobs and what I'm responsible for, and the root of that is the fiscal responsibility, but the decisions that are made and the recommendations that come to the board, they're supposed to be voted on from a fiscal aspect, so we have to have, you know, the money to do what we need to do. I don't necessarily think it came from legislation, that when, you know, the governor stated that he wanted to, um, and I can't speak for the governor, so please make sure, Angela, please make sure y'all quote that correctly in the paper, um, and that go out of this room correctly, I can't speak for Governor DeSantis, only him, but I, just me and him saying that he wanted to improve teacher's salary, I don't think it was never, um, his interest or legislative interest was it called divisions in school districts, or in communities, or with teachers. I think he just was saying, hey, this is something we need to do better. Unfortunately, it has caused, you know, like the young lady suggested, where it's, it goes into the veterans and then the new. Um, again, it was before my time that it came along far as the professional contracts. To my understanding, that was, you know, in the early 2000s when it came down, that didn't come down from the district, it was not a district that said, we was going to put this group of employees on a professional contract and this one, that came from legislator. So, again, as when any time law goes into effect, we have a responsibility, not as a district, not as a community, but we have an individual responsibility as constituents. Uh, we've been reminded several times from the community, just being here as local officials, when we vote for you, um, don't forget we're your constituents, but we all have that electoral responsibility to participate and to engage the process, and to stay knowledgeable on the process. So, I'm just going to ask that as we move forward, and we look at how we're going to, um, address the needs of our district and how we move forward, I am going to encourage us as a board, you know, we really do need to look at how we're going to move forward, and how we really going to address the needs of our community from a salary. from a salary standpoint and being able to compensate all our employees and their worth. Um, I don't think we'll ever really be able to, you know, pay, you know, for what we're receiving, but I would really as a board, you know, want us to be able to move forward. Again, back in February 2020, you know, I filed an item and I didn't get, you know, any response because I was saying, hey, you know, let's, you know, before this really come down and really hit us, how do we, you know, as a district, approach how we're going to do this and how we're going to move forward? Because we knew when it came down from Tallahassee, that it was going to make stuff harder when it comes to being able to do this. Um, but I hope moving forward, we can look at how we're going to move forward and how we're going to be able to address this and how we be, we'll be able to approach this situation as well as every other responsibility that we're tasked with as a board. Um, I don't think we, um, are going to be able to make excuses. I don't think we've tried to make excuses. I think we've looked at what we can do, but I just really think we do, moving forward, need to look at what can we do and how we can do it better. So, again, I want to thank those veteran teachers that came tonight. I want to thank the other teachers that came tonight, just the response that came. And I just pray that, you know, we work together as a community and we move forward. And when we address the issue, let's address it factually. Because I think a lot of stuff get put out there and it's not necessarily correct. So, I think if we're going to come together and if we're going to be tasked with addressing the issue, let's address it from a professional standpoint and not from just, you know, speculation or hearsay. You know, if you have questions as a board, we're here. We take phone calls all the time. Engage us and ask us and a- all of us are, you know, willing to share what we know and how we, you know, are able to look at what we need to look at. And I think that's the same for us as a district, which is the same as a classroom. I would never come in a classroom or in administrator, um, office or building and just, you know, say what I wouldn't know. I'm coming and I'm going to ask questions. So, I just ask that we do that as we move forward as a district and look at how we can address the issues and how we can fix the issues that continue to impact us as a community here in Taylor County. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Agner.
Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I really appreciate, um, your thoughts. I really do. Oh, nobody can hear me?
But, um, I welcome our new coach. Uh, you know, I've said this before from up here, nothing brings success like success. We're all feel like the boat is sinking. You, you know, a lot of people want to bail. So, let's try to keep a positive attitude. It's hard. I know we've all been through a lot this year, in the last couple, three years, really. And it just, it seems like it's just a never-ending thing. Uh, we had our insurance people come up tonight. We're trying to deal with that. We hope and pray, I ask your prayers for that, that it, that affects everything and everybody. And, um, but let's just try to stay positive. Let's, we just recruit from within. Um, let's try to keep people, make them want to come work with you. Make them want to be around you. Um, and again, nothing brings success like success. And that works for us too. It's what I'm pointing both ways. I appreciate all that you do. And, you know, if I had the, all the money in the world, you'd have it. Uh, I guarantee you that, you would have it if it was available. So, um, money and, and just the strings that come with it from our legislator, they know there, there's a thing out there now, they're deregulating the public schools. So, if you, I encourage you to stay on top of those bills and watch them. And if you have to put in some input and, uh, if this group here would go to Tallahassee and sit on their couch like you do here and tell them what you want to hear, I mean, you know, what your needs are, I guarantee you, they'd listen a lot more than me going up there talking. So, it, it, it's, it's a thought, it's a union for you to go in that direction, just a, a thought. But anyway, thank you all for coming tonight. I'm excited to see what, uh, the outcome is of all the meetings that y'all have had and we'll, we'll do what we can do. Thank you.
I'm Ms. Mathis.
You know, I just, there's so many of y'all that taught my, taught my daughter, that she just graduated last year, taught with my daughter. I see Ms. Hyer's out there and she, she and my daughter talked together in Steen Hatchie. And I just, I have so much respect for all of you and I, and what you do every day. And you're just the real M.V.P.s in our district. And I, I hate that we ended up where we're at right now. But I feel like it's growing pains and that we're going to grow from it and things will get better from it. I, I mean, we're listening to you and, um, that we're not always perfect. We're just doing the best that we can. We're human. When the minimum teacher salary hit us, I think Kylie said, you know, maybe we didn't level up the way we should have. And I think Tracy has said that to me too. Like, maybe it needs to be equal across the board, you know? And, and we could, we could have done better. It may have made us slower getting up there. I don't see how we could get any slower, but, you know, I, I really appreciate your input. I think it makes a difference. I think it's going to make a difference. And I do appreciate each and every one of you for what you do every day. And, and despite, despite it all, I appreciate us having gone through this because I think we'll be better for it in the end. So, also, have we ever had an energy audit? Do you know, Ashley? We have? Did, how long ago has it been? We know about the AC controls. Yes. We all know. Any teacher who has been in her classroom at past, you know, time.
But yes, we have.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So, maybe we could, it's time for just see what they have to say. Like, there could be a different, you know, viewpoint now. Save us a little money, that would be great. So, I think that was a really good idea. And, Mr. Anderson, thank you and Ms. Coach Popple for bringing the chairs in. You're talking, you're paying no attention to me right now. But thank y'all very much. And, Mr. Finley, that, I appreciate y'all doing that. And, um, I think that's it for right now.
Okay. Ms. Carlton?
Okay. Uh, I appreciate everyone coming out tonight and for those that also shared and as you notice, we, we do take notes. Um, I want to thank Mr. Stevens for giving us an update on, uh, Hurricane Idalia impacts. And those are the things that, uh, I know Ashley's worked, spends a lot of time working on those and communication with, uh, the FEMA consultants and the other people trying to work through to get those invoices completed. Um, congratulations to Mr. Braswell. Looking forward for great things there. Congratulations to Jimmy Bray.
Yeah.
And, and being, uh,
He's very excited. I talked to him today. He's excited about that.
And, uh, the other thing is, uh, you know, we've got a workshop February the 20th on our policies. So, was there anything else we needed to?
Is that, is, is that the date we're going on it? Are we all going to do it on the 20th?
That's when they're planning to be.
I've got it on my calendar.
What time is that?
Two, two o'clock.
Well, that, we have a regular meeting that day. So, they wanted to give like, like plenty of time.
Is that Neola? Neo?
Neola.
Thank you, Neola.
Is it two o'clock? Okay.
But I don't think their plan is to go through every single one of them. They want y'all to look at it if there's any that you have issues.
What you gave us tonight?
Yeah. Okay. And that's all.
All right. Again, thank each one for coming tonight. A lot of things have been shared and, uh, we hope that we can all move forward. Thank the, uh, for the report we got from the insurance tonight. Um, not always good news, but thankful for them coming and sharing with us. And it brings us down to adjournment. Do I have a motion?
One question. Something I meant to ask. Can we schedule a, a meeting in Steen Hatchie? We normally do that once a year before we adjourn. Can we do a?
We'll schedule that for the next meeting.
Wait till the next meeting to schedule it?
That would be a good idea. I think it's been a long
All right. Thank you.
All righty. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All right. Ms. Donnell makes that motion. Ms. Carlton seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned.